... Realistically, most people do not have good enough eyesight.
Hey, all right, everyone. We are ready and welcome this evening. I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, merry roll call.
Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Kenopa.
Here.
Okay. Well, first on the agenda is a very special presentation this evening, and we are really proud to have our Albany Police Department here, many men and women in blue uniforms this evening. So Chief Mario Latanzio, would you like to come forward? And Captain Eric Carter?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to recognize Officer Dan Posthumo, who elected the mayor. On August 20th, 2013, Officer Dan Posthumo was on patrol in the area of 504 Madison Park and report rather than having a call for service. Officer Posthumo noticed a suicide subject had been taken. Although Officer Posthumo was currently working on a call for service and issued information about the suicidal subject was not yet on there, he realized he was close to the area and started driving. He indicated a male subject had started a fire and was making suicide efforts. Officer Posthumo realizes the severity of the incident and notified that he was in route. Officer Posthumo was on scene and telephoned. Officer Posthumo arrived to find an adult on the ground next to a small fire. In the middle, Tom Kinefield was the child, moving to the fire where his shorts immediately caught on fire. Officer Posthumo landed the subject who was initially resistant, pulled the burning shorts off the man, and then further removed the subject away from the area. The subject received second degree burns, but is dead because of Officer Posthumo's attentive, quick, and decisive actions. Officer Posthumo suffered minor burns. This letter is a plaque, and the plaque says honoring the selfless and humane action in saving the life of a distraught... You know? You know, I think it's one of those things, I think, I've already done the same thing. I work with a lot of combat officers, and you might happen to be in the right place at the right time. So, doing my job.
Well, Officer Posthumo, we are very proud of you. On behalf of the City of Albany, we are very proud, and of our whole police department. You know, we, none of us can probably really comprehend what it's like for you every day when you get into that vehicle and every corner of, you know, each street that we have in our city. There's always the unknown of what's in front of you and what's your face for that day. And we just are really, you know, we really commend you for the wonderful work and all the hard work and the quality of life that you bring for our community. And we're very, very proud of it, and we want to thank you so much for your service. And thank you so much. It's very, what a wonderful honor and very brave. So, thank you so much. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. Counsel, schedule business. We have business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? We'll wait till the room is vacated. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you see anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward?
Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. Okay. We have a first reading of ordinance, which is on page three.
This is an ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer and water connections, and the assessment of sewer, water parks, and transportation systems development charges, and property described as tax lot 1208 of parcel 11 S3W8CB01208, and site address 1605 Oak Street Southeast, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance speaker had a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specially benefited by sewer and water connections, and the assessment of sewer, water parks, and transportation systems development charges, and property described as tax lot 1208 of parcel 11 S3W8CB01208, and site address 1605 Oak Street Southeast, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Bessie?
I have a question. I noticed that this, the charges are like around a quarter of a million dollars, and I just wondered, Mark, maybe you can kind of shed some light. Is this, I mean, like, is it a large value department complex, or just, is that pretty normal for something this size for it to be that high?
I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't spent time looking at this specific assessment, so I'm gonna have to read it real quick to get some of the history.
Well, I can leap in, having, it is, it is a large assessment against, but of course, what generates SDC charges are the demands, primarily the future demands, that it's placing on your infrastructure systems. And so, the number that you cited represents the charges for the additional traffic, because this will certainly contribute to the need for additional traffic control at that intersection at some point, whether it's, you know, immediately or into the future. You've got issues obviously related to water and sewer, and it would be like, I believe this is a 90, was this a 90 unit, is my recollection?
Eighty-one units.
Eighty-one units. So it'd be, I mean, in terms of demands on your system, it's not too far afield from, you know, close to that many houses, it's that many living units. Now, it might be somewhat less than houses because you might have smaller, smaller units, but still, it places a pretty big demand. And so, I mean, I think the short answer to your question, is it normal for a development of this size, is yes. It's based on a formula that we've had in place for a long time, and I suspect it's dramatically smaller than the assessments on the new development of the homes and apartments that are located on 34th and Hill, for example, which is a much bigger development. So, it is not an uncommon amount.
I just, I just wondered.
Yeah, and as Wes pointed out, the formulas are what we have adopted, and depending, there's, there's parks, SDCs, sewer SDCs, water, transportation, and they're all based on their own methodologies that the council adopted. And so, things like the water meter size, the number of units, number of trips, I think the parks is number of bedrooms, that all drives what those assessments are. And so, with 81 units and the traffic that's generated, that is...
Three thousand a unit.
Yeah. Our, our SDCs, at least the last time I looked at a comparison, we were at the low end, you know, compared to what other communities our size are charging, so.
It's a lot of money. Okay, well, thank you.
Well, it does, it sounds like a lot of money, but the person who did this development, you know, when they were considering whether or not to do it, they, they factored that in, and they just, they decided, we can still make a profit from this, so, and they went ahead anyway.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And also, this property stayed vacant for many years, and, and ended up having a new, you know, newly reconstructed street for Oak Street and not having to pay the assessments, I don't believe, on Oak Street. So, most people end up having to pay for their frontage on their street, so.
There's one other main, and that's, when we put in, say, the water line that came up Oak, I can't remember the size, but it's a 12-inch, SDCs paid a piece of that. The SDCs these people are paying, are paying back into the pot to put the main in in the first place. So it's a reimbursement, if you will, back into the system, where we prepaid on behalf of future owners, and then when they hook up, then they pay back into the pot to help other folks down the road. Absent that, the first guy in has to pay for everything.
Yeah.
And that'll bring everything to a screech and stop.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next is sort of routine of resolution, and that would be just accepting the votes from the November 5th election. That's a resolution on page seven.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. And next, this would be, I see Chris Bailey in the back. You guys have questions? This is a resolution on page 12, and this is for exempting a competitive bidding requirement through a contract with the League of Oregon Cities, the lead contracting agency for the national purchasing partners, and Deere and Company. And this would be for issuing a ward for a Pape machinery, so.
Yeah, and I can give you, there is some replacement, replacement resolution with
some additional language in there regarding the exhibit, and we are asking this so that we can replace a piece of equipment we have. It's actually a piece of equipment we obtained when we purchased the property for the new water treatment plant that, the tractor came along with that. It's a 1979 Kubota, and we've been making use of it here these past eight years or so. And while now it has some issues that we need to start addressing, we looked at, okay, do we want to just continue to fix it, or should we replace it? We also want to start mowing the airport internally, rather than doing it contractually, and being able to add a flail mower to the tractor would allow us to do that with a payback of just over a year at the airport, in order to power the flail mower, needing enough horsepower, and this tractor doesn't provide it. So we saw it as an opportunity when we need to do, we're thinking of doing that replacement, and also that opportunity to do the mowing. Jeff Kinney and Chris can answer any specific questions you might have about the tractor itself. This is one of those purchasing agreements that the city has entered into to take advantage of, but we do need council to take action in order to exempt it from going out to competitive bid.
Okay. Yeah, Rich and then Ray.
With the cooperative bid system, are all manufacturers available? I mean, if, you know, you're looking at John Deere, is there also Kubota and New Holland and yada, 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 yada throughout the, are they, do they all have some kind of connection with a bidding process that is cooperative?
So the cooperative system, they are competitively bid, and something like this, they'll ask for, I think it was landscaping equipment, which would include tractors, mowers, you know, probably a whole bunch of other equipment, and there's probably some minimum qualifications after me, but it is competitive and open to anyone who would like to bid on that. I don't know the specifics of the Oregon League of Cities' bid process here, but I can't imagine it not being an open and competitive process, you know, skirting those requirements.
Well, my, my concern is, do we have a system where if this is done from Salem, or done from Portland, wherever the whole thing is done, does everybody get to have a shot at it? And if it's a Kubota, I mean, we have a local Kubota, if it's a John Deere, of course, there's Pape, or what was, Fisher's, I mean, it's, isn't open?
It's still a competitive, it's still an open competitive process, but it's done on a larger scale, hoping there's some economy of scale that multiple agencies are going to be buying multiple pieces of equipment, so you can get a better price than if every agency went out and advertised. So it is open, an open competitive process.
Thank you.
And just a quick question. This is an item that's already been budgeted for, this isn't just, they came up as a surprise or anything like that?
Did we include it in this year's budget for replacement? I don't recall that we did.
I don't think so.
No. We had hoped to get through one more year, is what I recalled, and, but we will be purchasing this out of equipment replacement funds, which we have, we have equipment replacement funds. We're not pulling it out of something else.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is there any kind of time limit or number limit on the number of items that can be purchased with this mass purchasing kind of situation?
Generally, there is. There's a, you know, they'll open it up for bids for this year. Again, I don't know all the details of this purchasing agreement as far as the restrictions on how long it's good for, but it's fairly common that they do this around the nation. If you recall, I think we bought fire trucks through the Houston-Galveston purchasing, and we've bought some equipment in Public Works through that.
Well, I can see that for something that's really specialized, like a fire truck. I'm kind of wondering, this, this garden tractor kind of thing, we've got people right here in town that sell those, I think.
Well, we're buying it from somebody right here in town, from Tangent.
Yep.
A Pape, which is old Fisher implement.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's, it's done.
So are they selling nationwide, hundreds up?
Well, in this, this agreement is run through the Oregon League of Cities, so it would be in Oregon, and my guess is there's a network of those Pape dealers that are, that will sell to the, their local agencies who are purchasing.
There's some lucky agency that sells a thousand tractors one year.
What happens is, it's not exactly luck, because what happens is they, they go through a process, and anybody, you know, all the dealers are aware of this, they're sent invitations to bid, and in this case, John Deere was the, was selected, and was the low bidder, the lowest qualified bidder, and the John Deere supplier in our area is Pape.
Oh, okay. So it's John Deere in general that agrees to this mass purchase, and it's the local dealer?
I believe that's, I don't, I can't, I'm like, like Mark, I haven't seen the actual agreement.
Yeah, well, we do this, we do this, we do it, and the question has gotten raised, and I'm just curious as to exactly how that does work.
Let me take a stab at this. Any public agency can go out to bid for a product, and if they specify in their competitive bid process that other public agencies will have a similar right to bid, to buy the item, then those bidders are bidding a price and a commodity, knowing that if they are the low qualified bidder, they will not only be selling to the agency that initially went out to bid, but any other qualified agency that wants to piggyback. And so, in some cases, it may be a national bid that we choose to piggyback on, because we at staff have made a choice that we want that brand of widget, this is a good price, this is a way to avoid all the expense of bidding when we only want one widget. It may well be that Houston was buying 100 widgets, and they got a really good price, and we only want to buy one widget, but it looks like this is a cheap way we can get that without going through all of that expense. And so, it will vary in each case. League of Oregon Cities happened to go out for this kind of a product, so it would be vendors who were going to serve, send, sell product to Oregon. It would not have been John Deere, it would have been Pape as the John Deere distributor or dealer that was the low bidder, I would believe. And it happens that Pape has a distributor in our area.
Jim's probably right, although it could have been John Deere who responded.
I think it was Pape Machinery.
Can we find out for sure how this works? I'm just wondering.
Well, no, I mean, Jim's described it, and in fact, we've had people...
I agree with him, and I've heard about this for years while I've been on the council.
Right.
But I'm just wondering, you know, Houston buys a thousand widgets, would you say, hey, we like a widget too? So do we buy it from Houston, or do we buy it locally because we have a local widget dealer?
It depends on the individual details of the bid. It could be a situation where it was in fact a vendor in Houston, that could be the case based on that bid, or it could be something else, that it is a manufacturer, as Wes suggests. Yet, we would seldom go so far as Houston or out of state unless we were buying a fairly expensive, you know, select item. So when we're doing, like a fire truck. When we do something like this, we are on a bid, we're looking at bid pools that were Oregon-based, and that are therefore supplied regionally.
Should I go out and ask our local guy whether he's selling the tractor?
Well, you've got to understand that we can't sell, we can't make local the determining factor on our purchases.
And that's my point.
But that's a state law.
Yeah, but on the other hand, they could just say, we're not going to do this rig morole, we're going to buy locally and support our local...
No, you can't do that.
You have to bid it out.
You cannot. You cannot make local, you cannot make the distinction to say, we're just going to buy locally and exclude others from being able to bid. You cannot.
You mean, everything we buy goes on this mass...
Over a certain price.
Right. Well, let me jump in. I think the option is...
Change our local business.
Dick, I think the option is we could go out for bids, we could put an ad in the paper and solicit bids. You couldn't limit it to just local people. I don't think we have to buy everything through these national agreements, but we choose to a lot of times because it's cheaper than the city going through the process to collect bids from them.
I totally understand that, and I think I agree with it, but I'm kind of wondering for...
The concept, and Counselor Coburn has shared with us before, the circumstance that if, if one local community says, we will only buy for our local dealers, then our local dealers never get a chance to compete in other towns as well, because what one community does, another will do. And therefore, you would shut out local Albany vendors from being able to have an effective chance at selling their products in Salem, or Lebanon, or Eugene. And so, the state law is intended to put everyone on an equal footing in that regard. The only exception is there are bidder preferences that are allowed if, for example, a state, let's say a companion or neighboring state gives a preference to California items. Well, therefore, whatever preference California gives to California vendors, if that vendor from California were to try to sell in Oregon, they would have a tariff, if you will. So it's, it's intended to try to keep an even buying and selling playing field.
Dick, there's one other perspective, and that's the number of bids you might put out in a year, where we can use the commonality of some bids, it saves us time, energy, and paperwork. If we had to write every bid, we'd have to have a whole purchasing department to write the bids. So the real cost of buying the commodity goes up when you write numerous bid documents.
Rich?
I agree with what we're doing here. I guess I would point out that there is a downside for some businesses, and some of those businesses, if you're a medium to small business versus a national chain, quote unquote, you don't get the same kind of pricing. So you get to pay the tax, but you do not get a chance to sell the product. I mean, you're local bricks and mortar, and, I mean, where, I don't know how it works in tractors. I know, I can tell you with welding machines, if you're, if you're someone who sells 50 welding machines a year, you get a much better price than if you sell 10. And if you are someone like Home Depot, you can buy a little bitty welding machine cheaper than any welding supply can, because the way the marketing is done. So while we can buy it cheaper, I think we should remain cognizant that sometimes the local folks are, are kept out of that market. If, you know, see, Pape is not any small organization. They've got, you know, when it was Pape Brothers, you know, I remember talking with Dean Pape about a, about a cat. I mean, it was a whole different thing when it was local than when it is now. So while we may have to do it, it bothers me.
Well, one correction to what I said, as somebody else mentioned, for smaller dollar amount purchases now, we are able to directly purchase from local vendors, and that is our practice. So this is reserved generally for the high dollar purchases, where there would be a substantial extra cost to the taxpayer. But again, on, the vast majority of our small dollar purchases are all just directly purchased without any competitive bidding requirement from local vendors. Isn't that correct, Mark?
Yes.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, all right. Counsel, there's a resolution, and one that was on the dais that's replacing the one that's on page 12.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, anymore? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Next, it's adoption of the consent calendar, but there's a replacement page for item number four that's on the dais. So why don't we go ahead and pull off item number four, and then I'll entertain a motion for the other items, one through three, unless somebody would like one of them pulled off.
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd like to pull up number two.
Pull up number two. Okay.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar with the exception of items number two and four.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Bessie, item number two.
Yeah. When reading the staff report and information on this, it said that we weren't able to get any type of resolution with the neighbors, and so we're going to go ahead and put the yellow line up anyway. And I was, I brought it up on GIS and whatever, and I'm trying to think, first of all, do we know with the, I think there are duplexes across the street, is what it said, if they have parking, or...
Bessie, I think the way the report read is, it's not so much that we didn't have any luck with the neighbors, it was that the school district didn't have it, and it wasn't even with the neighbors, we didn't have any luck in contacting people who were parking their cars in a way that was obstructing the flow of traffic. So I don't think we know that it was actually neighbors that were doing it. And I, as far as I'm aware, there's been no complaint about this plan from neighbors.
You know, because I always think, you know, even downtown, we take parking away from here, you know, we put, or we put a shorter time zone on a timeframe, and this and that, and so I'm, I'm thinking about this, these duplexes, what kind of, it didn't look like they had a lot of parking, but you couldn't really tell from the maps that I found, and so I just...
Well, I know, I know that Ron had discussions with the school district, and they looked at different options and ways to get those buses turned around, and one of the options would have required parking removal on the side of the street where the duplexes are, and that would have been a bigger impact. So this is really the, you know, to facilitate the bus turnaround with the smallest impact on parking in the neighborhood.
And there's no other place for the buses to go?
Well, the school... Well, the school district, through their bond measure, they did some changing with where the bus pickup was, to separate it from where parents were picking up with their cars. I don't know all the details behind that, but it was generally a safety issue. But in order to facilitate that, they needed this turnaround, because it's a dead-end street, to get the buses moving in the right direction. And, you know, I don't think it's an everyday occurrence, but it's enough that it became an issue for the school district to ask us to make that restriction, rather than just trying to get compliance, you actually have something you can enforce.
Yeah, and I can understand, you know, I mean, well, I guess I really can't, because it sounds like it was poor planning or something. But when you take parking away from an area, a neighborhood, that doesn't have a lot of parking, you know, you think, okay, we take it away, then what are you going, where are they going to, where are they going to park? And they're going to obey the yellow lines and that type of thing. And so it just concerns me that we're just going to go ahead and do it, and-
It isn't, so Bessie, we're not removing any of the residents on-street parking, because they still have their parking in front of their dwellings. So if you look at it, the parking removal, if there was homes on the other side of the street, then that would be kind of impacting somebody's parking if there was homes there. But this is just the school district's property. So it's not permanent residence, that normally you would have a house across the street-
Oh, right. But still, they're parking. I mean, the residents are still parking because there is, I mean-
We don't know that it's the residents. It could actually, and probably, my best guess would be that it's probably parents there to pick up their kids from school. You know, that's what happens a lot, is, you know, when school lets out, and Marilyn and I have spent a fair amount of time monitoring that particular activity at schools around the city, is that you get a lot of congestion from parents who are parking in spots, you know, trying to pick up their kids. And it really is, it's a big safety issue. We don't think about it, but that, and we, I know from the experiences we had at Oak, that there were some fairly serious incidents there where kids were actually hit by vehicles because there wasn't good separation between the bus loading and the parents there to pick up the kids. So it really is a pretty critical safety thing, and I really don't, I mean, we haven't heard any complaints from neighbors, and I doubt that we will. I think the complaints would be more likely to be from parents who, you know, want to park closer to the school when they're there to pick up their kids.
And again, it is, the school district is compromising here, because their preference was to have the buses do a different maneuver, again, that would require taking parking off on the duplex side. They're willing to compromise, but they do need this help to facilitate those bus movements.
Gives me heartburn here. School, and I think, I think Bessie said it exactly right, it's bad planning. They change, and then they expect other people to make up for it. Now, I mean, we want to have safe situation for our kids, but realistically, what else could they do to do this on their own? And when you say, well, you're only taking this 40 feet off and that 5, you know, whatever it is, when you take it off, you take it out of the total amount of parking available. And what that does is just make it harder for other people to park. Now, I'm sure there is something else that they could do there. And frankly, I remember when we had a joint meeting with the school district, and they were saying that, well, we need to make our streets wider for their buses. Well, you know, my truck is as big as a school bus. I have no trouble in any street. I mean, my pickup is as wide as a school bus. My truck is as long and as wide as a school bus. I mean, Mayflower is in all places all the time. I think there's probably another way they could do this. I mean, Mark says that they, that they changed what their needs were, but what they were saying is, well, instead of taking it off of that side, we'll take it off of this side. It's still taking. I mean, if it's in your district, if it's in your neighborhood, it affects you. I think there's something else they could do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't this school district property already, that they're taking it off of?
Taking across-
The street.
Across their frontage, yes.
They don't own it.
If council would like, we could have the school district give a presentation on options they considered for this, if, but I'll leave that up to-
I think we've scheduled a joint meeting with the school district for-
February 10.
February 10, so-
Be a fine time to do it.
Because, I mean-
I don't know how, what was, was there urgency attached to this, Mark?
I don't know how urgent it is. Obviously, it's been an ongoing issue. Can they live with it?
This is grass.
Excuse me?
Is this lawn around the bus turnaround?
I would assume it is a playground and lawn area, yeah.
So they have space that they could use if they decided to?
Well, it's probably somewhat of an issue about getting the buses turned in there. And if you have cars parked on both sides, trying to swing them around, so it would probably require some sort of capital improvement on the school district property.
So Council, there was a replacement page for this that I overlooked for the resolution, because it listed in your packet was 20 feet of on-street parking, but under the, therefore, it was 45. So the replacement page lists removing 45 feet. So what would you like to do with this item? Do you want to take action, or would you like to delay it?
I would like to delay it. Help me, how many, how many feet is a parking space?
Probably 20.
Yeah. So you're talking about two-
Two real parking places.
Two real parking places, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's been going on this long, and I understand, we want, you know, the kids to be safe and everything like that, but it just, it's taking parking? I mean, apparently, somebody's using it for parking, and I don't think they're staying there forever. I don't know. But a little more information wouldn't hurt.
I'm going to oppose the delay. I think the school district is asked. Staff's looked at it. As Mark says, it's the least objectionable parking that they've looked at. I think the point to make to the school district is, when they look at their facilities, they need to look at them in totality. But I don't think it's an issue, two parking spaces, we hold it up for a couple of months. I think we make a point. We try to work with them in the future and get a better job in the future.
Are those multiple family houses along the street?
Duplexes, yes.
And they have-
Have two cars. Can you park them in front of the duplex?
Well, they have a driveway for each duplex, plus they have on-street parking in front of their house. So they probably have about three spaces per unit, almost.
Well, that's unless teachers park there, or, you know, it gets used if it's there.
Yeah. There is, you know, down Thurston here is our city Sunrise Park, so there is frontage down there to park, you know, for additional parking for their staffing, or-
Where the teachers park, is there enough parking lot for all the teachers?
They have a lot, yes.
And they all fit in there?
I can't, I won't swear to that.
This is a pretty, when the schools get out, it is a pretty congested area. You know, I've driven through this neighborhood when it comes to that time, and it's pretty tight quarters, so.
And I think that's true at probably most of our schools.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a suggestion. I would just as soon approve it tonight. I don't have an issue with it. But rather than hold it up for two months, maybe staff can reach out to the school district, get some additional information, and we can make a decision next week at our next city council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
The council, want to do that? Okay? Is that okay? I'm seeing all nods, but maybe one, but, okay.
Well, it could even be, have it resolved, but have a representative come and speak to us at that council meeting. I can't believe it'd be a very time-consuming issue.
Okay, all right. So you'll bring back that item next week. Okay, so on number four is the replacement page on the resolution. This would be for affirming the City of Albany's support for passenger rail services to the community. And there's two whereas's that was included, and one was about our Lynn Benton Transit Loop system that provides services between the two colleges. And the other one was about our Albany Area MPO and the Corvallis Area MPO that'll be looking at the transportation needs for our region. So this will be the resolution then, be presented, and what we'll need to do is kind of email it out to all of the leadership council for the Oregon Passenger Rail, Rapid Rail Leadership Council members, so they will all know about this resolution. Okay? Questions or need a motion?
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is business from the council. So, Bessie, anything?
I'm just glad to say that I really appreciate the decorations in our chambers, and I just really do love seeing the snowflakes up. And if we're lucky, we'll have some snow to go with the snowflake this weekend, and it'll be a picture-perfect downtown. But I appreciate all of those, the employees or whoever it is that has done the work to put them up every year, you know. I know it's a lot of work, but it's just gorgeous. Just love it.
Volunteers, public works, yeah.
Just love it.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you, tonight.
Dick? Okay? Yeah? Rich?
Just for information, a constituent called me, or well, actually stopped in, and pointed out that he ran into a woman at the corner of Sandy Am and Columbus. And so I got ahold of Mark and had him take a look at it, or, you know, whatever. It was dark, and she was injured, she was put in the hospital, and I understand that she was released. Anyway, the constituent was mightily concerned that he had a, well, he ran into somebody, and he didn't like the fact that he ran into somebody, so, and it was very dark, so that's being dealt with.
Was there a trap, or, street light out or anything?
Street light does not exist.
Oh, okay. Right.
And in the past, the Western Tool sign was on, and that kind of gave some light to the area, but now, there's one light across the street on the south side of Sandy Am, but nothing on the north side. And so it, on the way here, it was pretty dark.
Yeah, I had mentioned, I think a few council meetings ago, about 34th and Pacific was real dark, and, you know, pedestrians almost had got hit. And I had noticed that traffic, or the street light was out, and I reported it, Mark, and it has been fixed since. So it just makes a huge difference, you know, when you get one street light and what it does to a corner, but it was pretty dark before, and you just could not see somebody walking across the street, but, yeah. Oh, that's too bad, that, you know, unfortunate, hit the person.
The question about street lights, maybe Mark or Bill, the lights that go out and come on and go out and come on, does PP&L, every inventory of those things, they figure out, do they need to do maintenance on them, or they wait for a call?
My understanding is they wait for a call. I don't know if they've got some sort of circuit they do for anything else, but my understanding is generally complaint-driven. Bill, do you have any other experience?
That's my understanding as well.
Is it just the photocell on top of the head?
You know, typically, the first thing that fails is the lamp or the light bulb, and that's where you get the cycling. So when you're out troubleshooting those, the first thing you do is screw in a new lamp, and that will typically take care of it.
Are the new lamps more energy-efficient than the old lamps?
No, there's newer technology out there that's much more efficient, and the private sector's all over it, and some cities are switching to it. ODOT is fairly slow. There's been some rumblings that the City of Portland is going to replace them because PGE does not want to. And it's thousands and thousands and thousands-
We pay a rental fee for those, don't we, Mark?
We do, and PP&L has given some option for LED lights.
And that's what I'm speaking about.
But because of the cost structure and the light output, my understanding right now, the only ones that really make sense are your neighborhood residential street lights that, and I don't remember the whole cost structure, but I think, you know, PPL, PP&L isn't necessarily giving away anything to the city.
Salem, City of Salem has actually been doing LED replacement, and I know that, the reason I know that is that there was an article about how residents were complaining about the new light. Because, of course, while LED lights are much more efficient, they give off a different quality of life, and the complaint from the citizens was that it was not as bright, and that it was sort of a glaring, irritating light. So, nothing you do is without consequence, but it is something that we've been monitoring.
In years past, the city made a determination that they were going to take over the lighting here in Albany.
It was Ralph's point. Ralph wanted us to take it over.
And the company I worked for actually had the contract, or did the work. And the way it worked then was that typically, it was a police officer that would spot one and tie some pink or orange, like logger's tape around the pole, and then we'd get a call that, hey, it's in such and such a block, and you'll know, because it's wrapped with some lumber, you know, tape or whatever. I don't know, I think Mark's right, it's probably complaint-driven. I don't know that the power company has people driving around at night looking for them, or unless a conscientious PP&L employee would happen to see one and report it the next day or something.
We do feel quite a few of those complaints, and we have a process where we pass those on to PP&L when they come to us. I would assume PP&L gets some of those calls, too, directly.
We've also posted a link to their website directly, so people can report them quickly rather than calling us and having us pass it on. That's been on our website for about a year now, because we've had a fair number of those calls.
When I've done that in the past, PP&L always wants you to identify the pole by the pole number.
Right.
And who in the heck's going to get out and go find the pole number?
You know, everybody I've asked to do that does it. Really.
You just take your cell phone out with your 13-megapixel camera and take a picture of it from the car, and you'll be able to blow that up enough so you can tell.
Sure.
There is, now, in the past, I know there has been a, an attempt by the federal government to slow down the use of white light, because of the ambient light that the entire city puts off. And, you know, if, of course, there are red LEDs, but if the LED light is white light, I mean, that is more glaring in a residential area, there's no question of that. I mean, you'd be, if you're replacing a metal halide with an LED, it'd work, but if you're replacing a high-pressure sodium or even a low-pressure sodium, it would then glare.
Well, if I remember correctly, when Ralph was on council, Ralph asked staff to look at it, and Bob Woods did the analysis, and went through what the process would be if we were to assume ownership of the lights from PP&L. And it was a very lengthy process, a little smaller probably than what Billersburg is facing, taking over the customer base, but still, they have an asset, and if we want to take it over, we're going to buy it. And then we have to operate and maintain it, or contract with somebody to operate and maintain. But there are cities who require the developer turn that light over to them, just as, oh, we require the developer to turn the water mine over to us. Cities require them to turn the streetlights over to the city, not to PP&L.
We spend almost half a million dollars on streetlights annually. I think $465,000 a year.
Then they-
We pay a rental charge per light, and it's based on the wattage, and that pays for power, it pays for maintenance, you know, if there's a capital replacement that has to happen, we shouldn't have to pay for that. So it's just a, it's a monthly rental per light.
Or $2?
No, it's-
It was 12, it's 18.
I think it's, yeah, 18.
Yeah, okay.
I know other cities have faced the same situation, and it's kind of a two-step process. The first is to inventory what they have, because it's not uncommon- The first is to inventory what they have, because it's not uncommon that the power company doesn't even know how many poles are out there. They're charging you for a certain amount, but, you know, when's the last time they were confirmed or inventoried and so forth?
And we actually, we have done some of that inventory work. PPL gave us a list and a map. Those things didn't match, but we actually sent an intern out to do a bunch of that auditing, if you will. And I think the number they're charging us for is, is pretty close to what's out there. We're not way off. They may be charging us for poles that don't exist and not charging us for poles that do exist, but in general, it doesn't look like we're being overcharged for poles.
The bigger challenge is, once that's done, is determining the value of that infrastructure. It's not as simple as saying, starting January 1, everything belongs to the City of Albany and we'll maintain it. Power companies say, whoa, 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 there's a value to those poles and lights and the wire, and in some cases, underground conduit, and on and on and on. We would anticipate, or expect to be compensated for that. Well, a lot of it's older, some of it's newer. How in the world would you ever come up with a value to, to buy that?
Yeah, and then you'd have to start metering them also, because they're not metered right now.
Corvallis is doing that, and, and everything that they're putting in now is, is being metered, and it's frustrating, it's, I don't think the power company likes it, obviously, but the city is struggling with standards, and how are we gonna do this and make it the same, you know, as, as a contractor involved in this? It's never the same in every two installations. It's been very frustrating for me as well.
So each head is metered, Bill?
Well, that's the problem. It's, it can be. I mean, we've gone out and, and put a service on three different poles that are right down the street. Or, or you put in one service and take pipe and wire to each one. It's, it's not consistent, it's, it's a struggle, but, but you're right, then they, and, and I think the city's probably shooting themselves in the foot, because your minimum flat-rate fee on, on a service would probably far exceed the usage, the actual power usage, so you gotta be smart about it.
But aren't their fees then regulated through PRC?
Yeah, but it's, but it's just like, we've talked about this before, you go away for a month, and, and what's the cost of nothing? You still have a power bill, a water bill, cable TV, et cetera, et cetera. There is gonna be that minimum fee. I don't know what it is, but I, I can't believe that a streetlight uses that much power in a month. It's like, what'd you say, $18 maybe?
Yeah.
I'm gonna guess the minimum monthly flat fee rate for a service, what is more than $18, because remember, somebody has to come out there and read the meter every month.
Less now, but-
Yeah, they're getting smart meters now and so forth, but it's, it's a complex issue, to say the least.
Yeah. Old ones would be a real problem. New construction would be a lot easier, because you could plan for where the poles were gonna be and where the lights were gonna be while the street was being made, and have one meter fit 30 lights if you wanted.
Think South Albany plan?
Yes. Well, yeah. But it, at, at some point, if you talk about $18 a month, the amount of power in a, what, 150-watt, 200-watt light, you know, 12 hours a day, you know, 2.4 kilowatts at 10 cents, you know, it's, that's, you know, 25 cents a day. You know, so you're $7 and something in, 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 in actual power. The rest of it, of course, lights, upkeep, service call, I mean, 18 is probably not a bad number, unless you have enough of them so you can have a person that, that's what they do.
Okay, so your one intersection on lighting has sparked a lot of conversation here.
Oh, I'm not sorry, I brought it up.
Is that it, Rich? Anything else? Okay, Ray?
Two things. About two weeks ago, I almost rear-ended a real nice black BMW down at the Overpass who had, the light had turned to green, and the person driving the vehicle stopped at the green light to let the panhandler come over and take some money. And everybody was starting to go, and I was the second one right behind, and I almost plowed into her because I didn't think she was gonna be stopping, she just stopped right in the middle. So notwithstanding the nice little sign right there that says, don't do this, some of them on occasion still are, so.
I haven't seen anybody around train stations or around town.
Anyway, the other thing is, I'd like to commend and thank all of the city staff who did a yeoman's job putting on the open house, and for those of us that attended, it was a wonderful gig, and thank you very much.
I agree. I'm gonna mention that too. I thought it was very nice, and met some new folks that came to it, and they were just really complimentary of the city, and-
Good food.
Yeah, yeah, and everything that the city's been doing, so it was, really was great being able to hear that feedback, so, yeah. Is that it, Ray? Okay, or Floyd?
Denver Airport was backed up for two hours today.
Wow.
Tyreines just getting in and out of that place.
Wow, boy. Okay, the only thing I have is, I have spent the last two afternoons up in Salem for the, the rail committee with the state, and so everything's getting narrowed down to where the final recommendation is to the leadership council on the 17th. So it's pretty much kind of wrapping up to sort of affirm the plan. But from there, when you have the, this NEPA process, the environmental impact statement is projected to almost take three years before completion, so it's quite a process to go through, but, so yeah, so I'll keep you posted on the outcome of that. And Wes, anything?
I have an item that I briefly wanted to mention, and Mark, I think, has a couple of issues as well. I went to a meeting this morning, the monthly comp stat meeting that Chief Latanzio has implemented at the police station, and it's really impressive. I mean, what, what they're doing there is what we've been trying to do with the city for a number of years, and with varying degrees of success, which is taking data, you know, actual data from what's happening around Albany, and using it as the basis for your, for how you operate. You know, looking at the numbers, looking at the nature of, of crime in the city, and then, you know, deploying your resources based on that hard information, and then, you know, checking to see how the needle moves. You know, are we making a difference? Are we seeing increases? Are we seeing decreases? The chief had invited me to this meeting and indicated that he was hoping to try and invite folks from the council as well at some point. They are at 7 o'clock in the morning down at the police station, but I thought it was really interesting.
An early one.
And, you know, the good news, at least from the one we saw today, was that the numbers are down, which in the police world, that's a good thing. And so anyway, just a, I think, a really, a good step that has been taken.
So I wanted to make council aware of a, a work session that the Planning Commission is having regarding the Business Ready Task Force recommendations to changes to the Albany Development Code. As you recall, that task force was developed to look at ways to streamline development, redevelopment. The task force has wrapped up their work with their recommendation. We're gonna take that to the Planning Commission. They requested a work session before we take public comment and actually have the public hearing, so that they could wrap their, their minds around all the changes, because the changes span multiple articles in the Development Code, you know, there's a lot of bold and strike, so I wanted to make council aware of that meeting. It's January 13th. That's a Monday where you do not have a work session at 5:15. I assume it's gonna be here in this room, but that may be, get you some good basis background before it come, once it goes through the Planning Commission, it'll come to council for final approval. So again, that's January 13th at 5:15.
And, and most of the councils already, we did have a joint meeting already with the Business Ready Task Force.
That was in the spring, I think, is that right?
Yeah, and I think the Planning Commission was invited to that, or I can't remember. It seems like we might, might have had all three. And so there's only just been another, a few more changes and kind of tweaks to it, and then this will be coming back for the final.
So in addition to that, there's going to be an open house for, for people to come in, and then there'll be the public hearing before the Planning Commission and before council, so. The other issue is, you'll be looking at water rates next Wednesday, and one thing I neglected to point out in my presentation, or point out in, in your memo, although you'll see it in the rate resolution, want to make sure you didn't think we're trying to hide anything, there's a fire service charges, is something we've carried, it's kind of a legacy fee that's a holdover from Pacific Power. There was about 61 customers that were paying a fire service fee just to have a fire service. Not all customers that have fire services have that fee, and so in this rate resolution, you'll see staff recommending we drop that fee at this time. It, again, 61 customers, it's about, the revenue impact, about $27,000 a year. But again, we're not, currently, we're not charging everyone that fee, and it, it would take quite an effort for us to go back and try and find everyone who actually has a fire service fee, fire service connection only, and get those fees, and so we think it, it makes sense to go ahead and drop that. So I just wanted, you'll see it in the resolution, I didn't want you to think we're hiding anything, so.
Questions, Mark? All right, that's it. Okay, and anything else?
For those of you who haven't seen your email yet today, the work session on Monday has been canceled.
Yep, saw that.
Is there any, when that's gonna be rescheduled?
The first work session in January is the 6th.
Agenda item was the North Albany Senior Community Structure Down on Annapharic? Is that correct?
No.
No, oh, that's, you're trying, the Planning Commission meeting yesterday-
Oh, the work, I'm sorry, the work session.
That's, that's been rescheduled for January 6th.
Yeah, it was canceled due to a lack of a quorum. We had several Planning Commission members out of town, and then two others who became ill, such that they had to go to the doctor and couldn't come in, and so that's been rescheduled to-
January 6th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We worked with the developer to find a date that worked for them.
Okay, that was my next question. It's not gonna delay, should they get approval? Construction?
Well, it delays their, their decision by a few weeks, but we had to work, the, my understanding is, the developer has an engineer or representative that's gonna be out of the country for several months. We're just trying to make sure we get that decision before the Planning Commission and meet that schedule before their representative is out of town. So that was, we, we asked them for what date they would like, and that's what we landed on.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay, okay, our next meeting would be next Wednesday, December 11th. That's a regular session, and with that, we adjourn.